Good evening and welcome to Salem City Council Work Session. I'm going to call this work session of the City Council to order Monday, October 19th. We're going to be talking trees and tree programs tonight. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser?
Present.
Counselor Anderson? Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Young?
Here.
Counselor Osik is absent and Counselor nominee Jose Gonzalez will be serving as guest counselor.
Here. Judy, I see that Counselor Anderson is with us, so he's just checking in.
Okay, I'll note that. Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Okay, Counselor Lewis, do you want to listen to Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions, Counselor Hoy?
No.
Okay, then we'll move right into our discussion, our work session. I'm going to have Robert Chandler come on board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a quick point of order and maybe Dan Atchison can speak to it. The way our rules are currently configured, Counselor nominee Gonzalez is not allowed to participate in a special meeting without council action, if I recall.
So that's a motion to suspend the rules and let him participate?
I would move to suspend the rules and allow guest counselor Gonzalez to participate.
Okay.
Second by, ah, Hoy, thank you. Okay, any objections? All right.
From the city attorney.
Well, I would just like to note, I think your motion from the last meeting amended the rule for special meetings as well, so he can participate without this motion.
Well, good, we'll let him participate doubly. Make sure all our i's are dotted, t's are crossed. Okay, Jose, anything at all, just let me know you'd like to speak. Okay, Mr. Chandler? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I want to make sure you can hear me, I've got my new microphone on.
Sort of, you sound a long way away, but it'll make you awfully quiet tonight.
Yeah, everybody should be lucky.
There you go. Get it up by your mouth.
Okay.
That's better.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Ms. Chandler?
All right. Quick check, everybody see the screen so far, the cover slide? Perfect. Well, Mr. Mayor, city councilors and Counselor-elect Gonzalez, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Robert Chandler, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director. And joining me this evening is Patricia Farrell, our Parks Planning and Natural Resources Manager, and Mylan Davis, our Urban Forester. Tonight's council work session on trees, on city-owned property. And my computer, oh, do it that way then. Hold that thought.
I'm going to have you get a little closer to your mic, too. Make yourself really well heard.
All right, my, classically, my screen sharing is not working.
No, it was working fine.
Yeah, but yes, sir, but it would not advance, so let me try it again.
Oh, it's okay.
All right.
It did ultimately advance, there was just a little lag.
Yeah, that just would have shortened this thing up.
All right.
Okay.
Still here, still three of us?
Yep.
Still waiting for it to advance, all right, Plan B.
There you go.
So the twofold purpose of this work session is to provide counselors with an overview of the programs and projects for which Public Works is responsible. And after we finish that, we're going to talk about revising Salem Revised Code Chapter 86, which is called Trees on City-Owned Property. We have a specific policy question regarding enforcement and how much the violator should pay. So this is the overview, both Patricia followed by Mylan, will talk about our programs and projects and plans related to trees on city-owned property. I'll come back on and talk about quick history of code. And then I will tee up the policy question about really what should violators pay in three different parts, the civil penalty, restitution, also which is the appraised value, and then restoration. And then we'll open up, of course, for council discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Farrell.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, thank you. I'm Patricia Farrell, I'm the Parks and Natural Resources Planning Manager. And I'm here to talk about our tree programs. You can see on this list all the different programs that we've been undertaking in the last 10 years. And I'm going to talk about each one of these individually, but I just wanted to give you an overview of the overall programs. Next, Robert. So one of the first things that we did was develop a community forestry strategic plan. And this was done with a 17-member technical advisory committee in 2012. It was adopted by council in 2013. This plan lays out six broad goals, and underneath each one of these goals are several objectives. We had been working diligently, trying to accomplish as many of these tasks as possible that are within the city's control, one of which was to modify SRC 86. That was one of the first things that happened in 2015. Also, the technical advisory committee set a tree canopy goal. And that was an important first step to start working towards implementing some of these goals about increasing our tree canopy. We needed to know what we had, and then we wanted to set a goal on how to increase it. So at the time that we started this plan, we had a canopy goal of 18.3%. And we set a canopy goal of 23%. Okay, next, Robert. So one of the first programs that the city became involved in was Tree City USA. And this is a national program. Salem is a founding charter member, and we are the longest-standing city in Oregon to be a Tree City USA. So we're going on 44 years this year. And we also have gone above and beyond the requirements for Tree City USA, and we've achieved what's called a Sterling City status. And that means that we've received at least 10 growth awards. And growth awards are given to cities that do extra programs, extra outreach, invest more money in their programs, there's a whole range of options for getting a growth award. And so we will be going for our 13th one this year. One of the main things that we do each year for Tree City USA is we have an Arbor Day event. And the mayor also does an Arbor Day proclamation. As part of our outreach, we developed this logo, which if you look closer, you can see that inside the circle, it shows all the benefits that trees provide. Next, Robert. One of the other programs that we've undertaken to increase our urban tree canopy is we've contracted with Friends of Trees since 2013. We hired this group, they're a nonprofit group, they work throughout Oregon and in Southern Washington, and they have it down as far as getting people involved, having really fun events, and being super organized about planting trees in our public spaces. And so we've been using them to really engage the community and to do outreach. And at every event, we talk about the value of trees and why we're planting trees. And people learn how to take care of trees and how to plant them properly, which is one of the main reasons that trees die is they're planted improperly. So you can just see some pictures here, people have a great time, I know some city councilors have gone to events. Even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, there are still going to be tree planting events this year, we're going to have eight different events, they're going to be smaller because of the need for people to work with members of their family, basically. We also use Friends of Trees for our Clean Streams program. And so they plant native trees and shrubs along our drainages. And if they're in our parks, then we kind of double up on those plantings with riparian and other trees. Next, Robert. One of the other ways that we're increasing our tree canopy, because we can't do it all with urban forestry staff and we can't do it all with Friends of Trees, is Public Works has been investing $100,000 each year for five years, beginning in 2018, with a professional firm, arboriculture firm called Tree Ecology. And so we work with them, we decide where we want them to plant, and then they do the planting. And they have a crew that's trained, and they can get a lot of trees planted. You can see in over three years, they've planted 553 trees. And so we'll be continuing to work with them. This year, we're also having an agreement with ODOT, and we're going to be planting some trees along the Salem Parkway as one of our projects. And then other projects will be within some neighborhoods. Okay, next, Robert. So under SRC 808, we are required to do an urban tree canopy assessment every census year. So we just completed our third urban tree canopy assessment. And as I mentioned previously, we had set a canopy goal of 23% for 2020. And we were very nervous when we were doing the next new canopy assessment to see if we had reached our goal or if we had fallen short. And the good news was that we actually exceeded our goal, but we reached 24%, which is 6% increase, so that was very good news. And so we have just moved the goal forward by using the same methodology that we set the original goal. So we have a new goal now of 28% by 2030. As I mentioned, in order to reach, to keep increasing our urban tree canopy, we're really going to need private property owners to protect and enhance.
Patricia, would you mind a question from Counselor Hoy?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Farrell. I have a question about our goal. And that's, have we considered breaking that goal down more by area of the city rather than an overall? Because I know that there are quite a few equity issues out here in East Salem and North Salem when it comes to tree canopy, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more effective if we were to break it down by, not necessarily by ward, but by area? Or something, some other smaller, some subunit of the city?
That's a possibility, I mean, we have the data, we have the information for each. We have it actually broken out by census block, so we can get as detailed as we want to. I mean, one of the options is to do a neighborhood-type goal. So that everybody, because every neighborhood then would have a goal. And so even some of the more heavily treed areas would then still be trying to increase their tree canopy, so that's a good idea, that could be done.
Might help with buy-in. Neighborhood associations involved.
Right, right.
Well, Counselor, I would add that we do have the neighborhood associations involved. And the next slide, as soon as Patricia finishes with this one, we'll show you. And that's kind of how we set the target, the goal last time, was looking through the neighborhood percent of tree cover. And you'll see that.
Yeah, if you go to the next one, although we still have an overall city-wide tree canopy goal, it's not broken down by neighborhood, which is what I think Counselor Hoy is suggesting. So this is just one of the maps from the urban tree canopy assessment. So it is broken out by neighborhoods. And you can see that there's a wide variety of the canopy. So basically, the darker the color, the more tree canopy, the lighter, the less. Now, it's not all areas can have the same amount of canopy. So that's maybe kind of where you're going with that idea, Counselor, is that some areas, because of the land use and how long they've been developed, or some sort of restrictions as far as where trees could be planted, for instance, the airports. You know, you see southeast Mill Creek area is low. And it actually has a, it couldn't achieve a much higher percentage there because of the airport and because of the state prison system. If we did want to plant trees on some of the state's property, obviously, we would have to partner with them and get an agreement with them to expand the trees on their property. So you can see that, yeah, there's a wide variety of percent of tree cover. Robert, you want to go to the next one?
Can I ask a quick question? Hopefully, that's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Just to follow up on what Counselor Hoy was asking, my question is, when you look at the percentages by neighborhood, are you including, are you including parks in that? Because I know our parks would, most are going to have more trees than like a residential area, but I guess it would be, I think it would be helpful to see a breakdown perhaps by zone or something like that, maybe residential versus industrial versus public, if there's a way to do that as well, as we're kind of looking at the analytics of this.
Yes, and actually, it is broken down in quite a few of those analytics that you mentioned, and it's in the report, which is on the city's website, and I can send you a link to that in the chat as soon as I'm done. But a lot of that is already broken down, and yes, it does include parks. The overall tree canopy does include parks, but we actually have it broken out by that category as well as parks, and also by different zoning categories, like how much is in residential, how much is in industrial canopy. So we can slice and dice it many different ways. Okay, so now, so each neighborhood did increase some amount over the last 10 years from 2% to 8%. Some of these increases are due to existing trees growing. You know, so this canopy assessment is a very high-level look from satellite imagery and aerial photography. And so if you have a really small tree that you've just planted, it's not going to show up. So it has to give a certain amount in order to show up in this assessment. So one reason might be existing growth of trees that weren't counted before, just trees that have grown another 10 years and increased their overall canopy. And then also, they were able to use LiDAR data this time around, and so it's much more accurate. So there's some differences that may be accounted for that way. Next. One of the other things that the urban tree canopy assessment did was to calculate the ecosystem services that the tree canopy provides. And according to their calculations, it provides $80 million in annual savings to the city. And a lot of this comes through kind of intangible benefits, such as air quality and stormwater reduction. Also, carbon sequestration, you can see is a huge amount of that 8 million. And so trees provide all those different benefits to the city, as well as doing many other benefits that are not calculated. Okay, next, Robert. So we also join this group called Cities for Forests, and it's an international organization. It's kind of a think tank about trees. And they look at three different areas of forests, they look at the inner forest, which is the one that we're mostly talking about tonight. They talk about nearby forests, such as the watershed, such as the North Saniam watershed, where we get our drinking water. And then it talks also about the larger, you know, faraway forests, such as the Amazon Basin, where we get benefits from it, from just, from the air quality and the temperature control that that provides, but it's very far away, and most people don't even recognize it as a benefit. So this group has been helpful as far as providing some technical advice and also helping to think about funding sources for our urban tree programs. Next, Robert. And I do want to mention that with the Climate Action Plan that we're just starting, that trees are one of the key factors that we need to consider in our greenhouse gas. Emissions are one of the ways we can control that and absorb carbon and keep it sequestered or stored in the trees. And so that's a big benefit, and it also provides all the other benefits that I've already mentioned before. So that will definitely be, our urban forests will definitely be a factor in our climate action plan. Next. So Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, when we revised SRC 86, they were given the task of hearing appeals on city-owned trees that were proposed for removal by private property owners as part of development or for other reasons. And so they have, they've heard three cases so far, and they have come up against some very different situations in each of the three cases. And they've also illuminated some problems and some issues that they have with some of the appeal processes. And I think you received just recently a letter from SCRAB outlining some of their concerns and suggestions on how to possibly streamline that or make it better. The other thing that they're doing is that they have formed a tree committee. And this group has been helping staff with reviewing the overlap between some of our code sections. So we have the historic preservation, and we also have historic districts, and we have trees in those districts, and how are those, how do they work through the process? Is there a different process? So we tried to clarify that. We looked at the overall, the permitting process and the notification process, and tried to diagram that out, so we had a better understanding of how that works. They also helped with updating our recommended street tree lists, which is part of our administrative rule. And so one of the things I didn't mention was that we've been doing some sample street tree inventories over the last couple of years, trying to get a sense of the number of street trees, the condition of our street trees, and the species. And one of the things that came up was that we have a very large proportion of our tree canopy is in the maple family. And so we're trying to increase our diversity of trees by not planting maples, and also increasing the number of, the types of conifers that we could plant in certain situations. So we're trying to increase our resiliency in our urban forests by expanding our street tree list. And Mylan has been involved in that also. And then the other thing that SCRAB is doing is they are working on a, developing a public survey that's going to be sent out probably early next year. And as I mentioned, we want to really engage the public to plant more trees on their properties and to protect their trees, and to pick the best tree for the right spot so that they don't regret it later. And so they're developing kind of a perception, like what are people's perceptions about trees? You know, what are the incentives and the barriers to having trees on private property? And so that's something that they're working on as part of this tree committee. So with that, Robert, I think I'm on my last slide next. Yeah, so that's the end of my presentation, and I'll be around for any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Tom.
Thanks. Patricia, thanks for this good report. I'm curious about goal number two, which is education. It seems to me that's where we've fallen down, both in terms of some of the tree cuttings that we've had recently, that we've had to deal with after the fact, and also in terms of what you just said about all the terrific programs that SCRAB is looking forward to completing. I know that at one time, we sent out in utility bills, and this came from a constituent of mine who sent me a personal email, there were notices about, you know, oh, rake your leaves into the street, that kind of stuff. Perhaps in the utility bill, we could also send out some sort of notice about what you're just talking about, about the survey, about how important trees are, et cetera. And then I'm, so that's just more comment. Then I'm curious about goals five and six. How close are we to implementing them?
Refresh my memory on five and six.
What, you don't have memorized?
I don't have my slide.
Five is developing and implement a community forest management plan, and six is a stable funding for the community forest program.
Yes, thank you, Robert. Yeah, so I think having Mylan, having an urban forester on board, you know, we had a couple of years without an urban forester, and that really put us back a little bit. And so we needed to have an urban forester to do goal five, basically. How we do that, we haven't discussed fully yet, but that's something that maybe there would be another technical advisory committee that would be involved in that. But I would look to Mylan to possibly lead that effort on goal five. Other, one of the subheadings under goal five is using technology to better track our urban forest. So, and Mylan is going to talk about that more, because kind of figuring out workflow and the inventory and putting it all into our IPS system is all happening now. And so I think that we are moving forward on some of those pieces of goal five. Goal six, stable funding, so you know, that's a harder one. We do have a tree fund, a Salem tree fund now, where the violations, the money from violations goes into the tree fund. And so that money can be used to restore our urban forest. And then we also have just our funding from Public Works, because we're funding this Tree Ecology, and some of our funding is coming for riparian restoration to restore our creeks. And so that's coming from Public Works funding.
Yeah, I would say, if I may, Mayor, so there is the additional funding that we've done to plant trees, and that's both the $100,000 a year and then what we do with Friends of Trees, additional $40,000. We've also made it a point that every time we do a street project, trees are planted as a part of every street project. So that's another way where we've created stable funding, where we don't have, the other part of the community forestry program now, as Mylan gets into his presentation, which is the management of the forest, of the urban forest, that's more difficult, because that relies either on gas tax funding for street trees or on general fund, funding for the other aspects. And that is something that, you know, the conversations with the city manager start tomorrow internally about what the new programs might be. And we will start to have the conversation about how we can improve, how we can improve funding for the management part of the community forestry program. And that's the tougher discussion. You know, it's relatively easy to find $100,000 to plant a tree. It's a lot harder to find several hundred thousand to add staff and add equipment and that kind of thing, but we are certainly aware and we are working on the goal.
I had a couple of questions. Is Tree Ecology just doing city street trees? Or are they also doing other kinds of land park trees and others? What is their mission?
They are just doing street trees at this point, because...
So that 500-plus, are those all the street trees that have been planted? Or is there another group, is Friends of Trees involved in street tree planting? Or do you have it sectioned off? I'm just not clear who's doing what, I guess.
So right now, Friends of Trees is primarily working, pretty much exclusively working in parks. We are looking to use the park as kind of the hub to expand out into the neighborhood over the next few years. But because the difficulty of working on streets, and often the spots are kind of spread apart, so it makes it harder logistically to plant.
Yeah.
But Tree Ecology is doing just street trees, and then urban forestry has their own program, and they do street trees and other trees as well.
Okay. Is Tree Ecology's number of tree plantings limited by how much we pay them?
Yes.
In other words, if we paid them more, could we have more street trees?
Yes. Because we not just, we paid for the planting, but also for three years of maintenance. And so the water...
Exactly, but it's a, yeah, it's the planting and survival of a street tree. It's just trying to figure out what the, how you could expand that program if you wanted to. And it's just a matter, at this point, of money, it sounds like.
Well, and Mayor, you know, Patricia speaks about this five-year, what we have is a five-year contract. There is no limitation on how long this project, this program can go.
Okay.
And these are stormwater funds.
These are $100,000 a year?
It's $100,000 a year, and it's in the total amount. So any kind of administration work is separate from the $100,000. So Tree Ecology gets the full 100. And that's not to say that in the future, we couldn't start to increase that amount. You know, I mean, we do this sensibly, it doesn't not have to be street trees. We just think that that's an important component, but when we run out of streets, you know, we'll do pump stations, we'll do other parks, we'll do properties, you know. So whatever, wherever we need to go, this is, I call this industrial tree planting. We're just planting away.
Yeah, if we gave them 150,000, we'd get more trees, 50% more trees.
We'd get more trees.
Okay, that's helpful. You had mentioned the maintenance of the watershed. And I don't know if that's the creeks, I just recently was looking at some aerial shots up into our watershed, up toward Detroit, up in that... I, I just recently was looking at some aerial shots up into our watershed, up toward Detroit, up in that area. And it's, it's pretty grim. Will we be involved? Are you describing an activity that we will be involved in to begin shading the, the river? I, I just wasn't sure what you meant by watershed.
So, yes, so one of the programs that Cities for Forests does is this watershed. And they, and they look at funding sources. And actually, we just had a phone call with them that included the North Saniam Watershed Council to talk about forests and fire and building resiliency back into, into the watershed. So we will be one small cog in that major effort that's involving many, many agencies for restoration of that watershed.
Okay, great. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Patricia, if Mylan's going to answer this later, that's great. But I have two questions. You're talking about Friends of Trees. I think one of my neighborhood groups, and it might've been Nan, was looking at some program where Friends on Trees could come on private property, you know, an individual homeowner's property and plant trees. So I'm wondering if that's a possibility, if that's something we could explore with Friends of Trees. And, you know, it would somehow the, the individual property owner would pay something to have them come on and plant some trees. So that's one thing. The other thing, and this is more toward Director Fernandez, I would think, and maybe for Mylan later. I would say, Peter, that the parks and Public Works have done an excellent job at Bush's Park. When trees fall down or trees have to be removed, you're always planting new ones. And there are a bunch you can see, you know, five-year trees, 10-year trees, 20-year trees. And I'm wondering, I presume that's done in other parks. And I'm also wondering if you have a supply of trees like that. Maybe you could also plant more trees in more parks before ones fall down. I understand it's great to, to, to plant one or two more than when one falls down. But, you know, maybe there are areas in our parks that you could see to plant some trees.
I think you have perfectly queued up Mylan Davis's presentation. I think you'll have answers to that. And if not, we'll certainly get to him here at the end of his portion of the presentation.
Thanks.
Shall we, shall we move on then to the urban, urban forestry division?
Mayor, I've had my hand up for quite some time. I had a few questions.
I can't see you, I'm sorry.
Uh huh. So we please go back to the slide with the goals, please.
It was like slide three, maybe.
Nope. Oh, those ones, yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. So a couple of comments about the goals that I see here. So I understand that this is definitely a synopsis of each goal. But one thing I want to make sure I point out is that none of the goals expressly call for handling and protecting mature trees. And I point that out because as we know from the public comment we received before this meeting, that mature trees provide considerably more benefits than a new tree or an immature tree. They sequester more carbon, they better reduce air particulate matter, they provide better wildlife habitat, they reduce stormwater runoff and provide greater reduction in the heat island effects. And so one of the, and I think that's important to mention because one of the concerns that we keep hearing from our community is about the protection of these mature trees. And the reason why I want to draw attention to the goals is not only are mature trees not called out specifically, and again, this high level review, overview of our goals. But I also want to point out that if we can do more to support goals two and four, for example, I think that would have a particular benefit for the preservation of mature trees. Because to me, all of, for goal two, increase education outreach about tree benefits, incumbent within that goal can be discussion of the benefits of the mature trees on our properties around the city. And the same for goal number four, improving city coordination, communication and codes relating to trees. As we know, there are certain penalties for removing trees and those penalties may be more some if the, if it's a large tree over a certain diameter. So I want to both call attention to goals two and four and how important they are. And more importantly, how they can relate to preserving the mature trees that can make a huge difference from all those public health benefits that you guys pointed out. So those are just some comments I wanted to make. If staff have something they want to follow up on or clarify for me, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a very good point because, I mean, definitely the bigger the tree, the more the benefits that they provide. And so part of that is Mylan will talk about because the size of the tree and the condition of the tree goes into the assessment of the value of the tree. And it also goes into the assessment of the ecosystem services that that, that particular tree provides. So, so that, that's, that's a very good point. And if we don't specifically say mature trees, you're right in it. And so that's, that's something that we could try to focus on more. Also, sometimes when people buy properties or property is developed around mature trees, the mature trees ends up dying, you know, might not be for years later. I mean, that's the thing about trees is it takes a while before the, the impacts are shown. And so if there was some special way that we could call that out, you know, during development to protect those trees or make sure they're in the conservation plans, that would be another way.
Great.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Let's go ahead then with the urban forestry.
Mayor, I think Counselor Anderson wanted to be acknowledged.
Yeah. Okay, sing out if you want to be acknowledged because I, I can't see you because we're using a split screen here.
All right, sorry, Mr. Mayor. We got a great letter, I think, from Michael Slater on various things. And some of the things that were in his letter were mentioned by Counselor Nordike about mature trees, et cetera. But also he suggested, and this relates to goal, goal number one, that we set a goal of 40% of canopy covered, a tree canopy coverage, which is sort of the tipping point for the best environmental ecological effect we can have. So I don't know if Mylan's going to discuss any reach goals that we have, but that also ties into the Climate Action Plan. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I just would, I would just add just to that 40% is that, that goal often comes from the East Coast where they have year-round rain. And the West Coast actually is a much different situation. And also if you look, we actually looked at how, at the plantable area. And I'm not sure we can even reach 40%. If we, even if we planted every single spot where a tree could go, I'm not sure we could reach 40%. So I guess it's one of those whether you set an aspirational goal or a, a incremental goal.
Thank you very much, that's helpful.
Good. Well, we are into aspirational goals, so. What do we got? Let's hear this urban forestry division.
All right. Yep, I'm ready. Thanks, Patricia. Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for initiating this work session and thank you guys for all the time you put in for the city of Salem. As you can see from Patricia's presentation, we're doing a lot to enhance the tree canopy in Salem. And I, you know, a big part of the reason I decided to come to Salem was, were the conversations I had with, with Peter and with Patricia about where this program is going and sort of what we're going to do moving forward. So I wanted to thank them and definitely thank Jennifer Keller, Parks Operations Manager, and Mark Bechtel for all they've done for me and making this first nine months for me really easy to jump in and transition into some of the new programs and some of the new ideas that I had for this program. So thanks a lot. So you can go to the next slide, Robert. So for those of you guys who don't know, the Urban Forestry Division is in the Parks Operations, which is inside of the, the Public Works Department. We're tasked with caring for, for pretty much all the trees on city-owned property, city parks and anything in the right of way. Pretty much the only thing we're not taking care of are, are trees on the school properties. We're only a full-time staff of six, myself, who manages day-to-day operations and one inspector and four full-time tree crew. We have, right now we have three seasonal staff who help us with tasks like watering the trees during the summer. We have a seasonal staff now helping with our inventory and another seasonal staff helping with some of the other day-to-day operations. So usually we're only a staff of six. So imagine a staff of six caring for the entire canopy of, of Salem's trees. And that's, that's what we're trying to do here. So let's see, with the six full-time staff, four of us are certified arborists. And we have one tree risk assessor now on staff. So pretty much we prune, plant and remove any trees in the right of way. Taking into consideration the health of the trees as, as we're doing this and, and trying to get an idea of the overall health. I can talk a little bit about that in a little bit when I talk about our new inventory that we're working on. We also work with the Public Works Department on permits for any, any resident who'd like a permit in the right of way. We're also working with the Planning Department on permits for significant trees, any historical trees that are in question. We're tasked with, with inspecting those permits as well. You can go to the next slide, Robert. So because of the size of our staff, most of our work is generated through service requests and weather-related events. So all the work that you see here on the screen, the, the trees we pruned, planted and removed, a lot of that's generated either through a service request, like I said, or storm, or even working within other departments. The Streets Department, we prune a lot of trees for streets when they're putting in new roads. We prune a lot of trees for the street sweepers who need clearance for their machines. And then the, the number of trees we plant, we try to plant as many trees as we remove each year. That number may seem a little bigger there, the 23, 7, 237 trees removed. We planted 145, that was in 2019. This year we're a little closer to the, to the even number. We're not done with 2020, so I didn't give you the exact numbers for, for 2020. But we'll be close this year to, to planting as many as we've removed. And hopefully in the future with some new programs that we're coming up with, we'd like to, to plant a lot more trees than we remove. Let's see, you can go to the next slide, Robert.
I know that one.
So this is, I think, a big part of the reason that, that these guys brought me here. Previously I've worked on two inventories, one in Washington DC and another one in Virginia where I helped get a complete inventory of the, the trees for the Department of Transportation in, in Washington DC for the Urban Forestry Department there. So we've been working since February to come up with a complete inventory, GIS, GIS inventory, working with Public Works, JIS specialist, setting us up so we can inventory pretty much every single street tree in the city and then move on to inventorying park trees. And so right now we have three guys out working, collecting data. They're visiting street trees. They're determining the health, they're getting the size. We're determining the, the size of the planting space, collecting significant other data, whether there's overhead wires, the condition of the sidewalk adjacent to the tree. If you can see the map there in the bottom right, that's, that's an overhead shot of what it looks like. Currently we have 15,000 trees that we've inventoried. In 2018 and 2019, we had Salem had inventoried 3,000. So just in, in eight months, we've done another 12,000. We hope to have this done by probably fall next year, going at this rate.
Mr. Davis, if I could interrupt you for one moment. If I could ask whoever's having some offline meetings with their microphone unmuted, if you could go ahead and mute your mics, that would be helpful. It's making it difficult to hear, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
So yeah, just really, this is helping us manage what we have. We, you can't manage trees if you don't know what you have. So this is going to allow us to see all the trees that are out there that the city's going to be maintaining, the health. We're going to understand the top right photo there, if you're looking at the, the screenshot of that. That would be, right now we're identifying trees with a yellow dot as future trees to be planted. So we're, while we're out doing the inventory, we're also looking for the opportunities to plant. And at the moment we have almost 3,000 spaces available for new trees. And this is only us getting about 20% of the inventory done thus far. So it's going to help us identify those locations to help us get a higher canopy coverage by knowing where we can plant trees and, and sort of which trees we can put in each of those locations. So to me, this is one of the most important things we're working on right now is coming up with a, with a JIS inventory. Next slide, Robert. This is a picture on the far left is sort of some of the things I come across, some previous practices. But now trying to work with Public Works staff. Picture in the middle there is the sidewalk crew. I meet with those guys daily. New locations where new sidewalks are going in, we're working together to, to figure out ways to, to improve sort of just the operating procedures and, you know, day-to-day work. It's, it's really important that we get out and, and see this, this work and work with these guys to make sure we're doing the right thing. We've, this is one of probably 20 pictures I could show you over the last couple of months of working with the sidewalk crews where they've been great and working with us to go over roots instead of cutting roots. And, and it's, it's been a really good relationship and across the board with the Water Department, Streets Department and the, and the sidewalk crews here, just, just making sure we're on the same page and following proper procedures. You can go to the next slide. This is some of our accomplishments from this year. Like I said earlier, we have currently of our six staff, we have four certified arborists. We're working on new, new safety standards with OSHA and TCIA. We've had three aerial rescue training events with the Salem Fire Department, which has been great. They've loved it, we've loved it, we've learned a lot from each other. They've learned a lot on how to rescue tree care industry guys from us if, if someone's stuck up in a tree. But it also helps us to be able to, to, to feel safe about our guys working up in the tree. If something happens, they know how to rescue us and, and vice versa. So we've already scheduled some more trainings with the, with the Salem Fire Department. That's been great. We're transitioning a lot of our tools over to battery-powered. Right now we're using all, changed over all of our power pruners, our blowers and some of our top handle saws, we're using up in the bucket from, from gas-powered saws to battery-powered with the new technology. Top right picture there is Marion County Juvenile Facility where they just got a, a new sawmill. And the majority of the wood they get is from our trees. So when we remove large trees, they're getting a lot of the wood either for, to milling or for, for firewood for sale. So a lot of their program is funded by the wood that we donate to them. So none of our wood goes to waste. We either are giving it to them to reuse or all of our wood chips from our chippers, from all the pruning we do and removals we do go to either park locations or to some of the city community gardens. Just a little note, we were the first Public Works unit to go paperless this year. So all of our service requests now are done through the new IPS system. And I guess I'll say a little note about the IPS system before the next slide. It's, it's just sort of a new integrated system where we're, we're using technology to create a lot of our work orders. That's sort, sort of in the works and that's going to go along with our GIS inventory that I just showed you before, that we'll be able to attach work orders to a specific tree. And that'll give us a lot of knowledge on previous work done on trees. Where in the past, we may have some archived data that's sort of harder to find. But to, to be able to actually have that knowledge at our access a lot better. So you can go to the next slide, Robert. Thanks. This, this slide and the next slide will just be a little bit about how we're putting money into the tree fund currently. Working with our risk assessment team. Anytime there's a motor vehicle accident or an accident involving a tree, we take pictures and then have created a work, a spreadsheet on the right that calculates sort of our staff's hours, the cost of planting a new tree and the cost of maintaining that tree. And our risk team will take that and give it to an insurance agent to get refunded. And then that money in turn will go into our tree fund. So we put quite a lot of money into the tree fund this year. I think that accident there is on commercial land, that was probably three weeks ago. But I don't know if you guys read the daily logs from the, from the Public Works Dispatch. We have, we have some, quite a few accidents in the evening citywide. So it's nice to be, get refunded for that. we have some, quite a few accidents in the evening uh, citywide, so it's nice to be, get refunded for that and we try to make this an actual account of the money that it takes to, to remove the tree, to plant a new tree and then to care for that tree moving forward, so. You can go to the next slide. In the next slide, this is just an idea of what it looks like, our, our current tree appraisal worksheet, which you guys will hear more about, uh, that we've come up with. Myself and Robert and Peter and Patricia, Jennifer and some other staff, uh, took a couple of months to come up with this using the plant appraisal guide from the council of uh, land appraisals, landscape appraisers uh, through the ISA, the certified arborist uh, society and a few other uh, reputable landscapers to come up with this, this worksheet, so. Uh, you can sort of see filling this out based on the health of the tree, the size of the tree and then the cost of the tree uh, to replace and then the, the aftercare of the tree, everything uh, rounds out and that's sort of a, a total we came up with, we, we worked through numerous sheets, uh, some really high, uh, some lower, this was sort of on the medium high range where we felt like it, it was a real sort of showed the real worth of the tree, so we'll use this uh, moving forward with a lot of our decisions on how to, to charge for, for removal of trees or, or topping of trees, things of that nature that, that Robert might be talking about later. That's all I have, if you guys have any questions for me later at the end of this, or you have any questions now, let me know.
Anybody got any questions? Uh, Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask a couple of these earlier, but I wanted to make sure that my line got a chance to go through here so that I wasn't asking a question that might be addressed, um. The, the risk assessment, knowing that I've had a few trees in the neighborhood, there were significant trees as well that are starting to drop limbs that are damaging personal property, kind of a question on how we deal with those because they were allowed to, to be removed in the past. Um, and then who, who does someone contact if their sidewalk is buckling because of a tree root? Um, does that go through Public Works Dispatch or should they contact the uh, the urban forestry folks? Because I have a, another neighbor currently um, that has a tree that's on its last leg, it's dying and, but it, it's root is also buckling the sidewalk.
Yeah, Councilor, let me take the second one, then Mylan can answer the, the first one. Any issue, any issue that any resident has should always go through Public Works Dispatch. Five, five eight eight, six three one one or three one one at, at cityofsalem.net. Uh, that way a dispatch can set up a uh, a, a service request and that's what Mylan was talking about and then they can, uh, the staff can go out and address it and they will coordinate uh, with the sidewalk team or, or if it's impacting a water line, they'll, they'll coordinate with the, with the water team. So, so Public Works Dispatch is the way to go on any, any issue, including tree issues.
Is that number not five eight eight, six three three three, which is the one I always used to give out?
You can give that one out or you can use six.
Okay, yeah.
They, they both work, yeah, so Mylan, if you can take the other question.
Sure, and I'll, and I'll finish what you were saying there to Brad, that when that happens, it goes to the sidewalk crew and me. And we both, and we both are aware of the situation and usually what happens is we'll, we'll figure out who's, who's what there and, and who needs to do what. It's usually the sidewalk crew will go out and let me know sort of their, their operation and if a tree's going to be removed, it's a dead tree, then we'll remove it and they'll, and they'll have the opportunity to come in and, and do a clean slate sidewalk, but a lot of times we'll, we'll work hand in hand on trying to figure out a, a solution for that. And I didn't really understand your first question, you were asking me how we decide if a tree's going to be removed, the risk.
If, if, if a tree becomes a hazard to persons or their property, how does one look at that? Because we actually had to have a white oak cut down, it was a significant tree, but knowing white oaks and, and knowing how they behave, they tend to drop great big limbs a, a lot of the time as well. And you know, I had a personal tree on my own property, it was a Paulina, uh, otherwise known as an empress tree. Um, that almost took out my life when my son was a baby as they were walking up the driveway. And so how, how, how do you look at a tree that may be healthy, but it's dropping limbs, but it's a significant tree?
Right, unfortunately, a lot of older trees drop limbs, that's sort of uh, part of the process of their life and we, we we try to assess each tree for each location and, and taking risk into consideration is our, our number one job as the urban forestry division, um, taking that risk into account and trying to keep residents safe and trying to keep the streets safe and keeping an eye on the trees that we think are hazardous and that takes into consideration a lot of factors. Uh, construction that's been done around the trees, um, any sort of signs of stress, signs of fungus, uh, signs of dieback in a tree and, and, and you know, a, a part of having the inventory is, is us having an, an idea of which trees and are where and what kind of health they're in and, and be able to monitor the trees that we consider to be, you know, re, any tree that's a high risk to me is, it shouldn't be around anymore, so you know, that's, that's sort of how we're basing where we're moving forward, trees being removed, high risk trees. Uh, a risk means a tree has a target, either a car, house, um, in the park and we're definitely trying to mitigate any high risk trees period, citywide, so. Um, but, but a lot goes into, to consideration there and, and that's what happens with a lot of the mature trees, I know, you know, goal one, it says the first word is protect and we're trying to protect the canopy of the city, uh, city's urban forest and, and you know, doing that is also thinking about infrastructure and thinking about other city services that are provided that also go along with having an urban forest, so. You know, we're, we're trying to think about that in the best, best way possible.
Excellent, if I could have one last kind of follow-up on something you had said, then a question and I don't know where the question would be answered from, I really appreciate the uh, the identification of future tree locations. And with that, I'm assuming you're looking at power line locations and what kind of tree might be uh, appropriate for that locations. Um, so wanted to, to add that as a comment, but when we have PGE sent out letters to people, we're going to be pruning street trees in your area, knowing that, you know, maples create a great canopy, but depending on where they're planted can also significantly impact power lines. Um, how, how do we interact with PGE when they're pruning?
Well, you know, they own that property, they own the rights to that area. And so unfortunately, that relationship between large trees and power lines don't really, don't really gel in any sort of way, so. And one of the first things I did when I got here is worked with Patricia, she reached out to me and, and we came up with a new planting list. And a lot of that has to do with the right tree in the right place, you're going to put the right tree and that's going to help us with sidewalks moving forward too. And, and a lot of these spaces where a tree that was planted there was too big of a tree for that spot, so now it's pushing the sidewalk up. Or a tree was planted that's too tall, that is growing in the wires now and so we don't ever really want P G N E to be pruning any of our trees. Because number one, they don't do a great job of pruning trees, they just come in and, you know, and top them wherever, within ten feet of their lines. And so for us moving forward, we won't be planting any big trees under high phase utility lines, it'll all be trees that grow under the lines, not giving them, them the opportunity to, to prune and also just keeping, you know, keeping us safe and trees that are growing in the power lines are very dangerous, a tree limb can catch on fire anytime if it comes in contact with any of the high phase utility. So that's something that, you know, they're trying to keep us safe and they're trying to keep their lines uh, clear for that reason, uh, because it is a huge hazard. Uh, citywide, if you have any trees.
But, but does our permitting process exempt P G E or, or how, how, how do we interact with them?
Well, you know, you, you can call me for sure and I can, I can interact with them and try to make them do uh, the right thing. Uh, I think we should have some programs moving forward where we have them pay for tree removals on trees that they've mispruned for years and years. That have, you know, caused trees to grow a certain way to make them a hazard and for them to, to plant the right trees in the right place, um.
No, but, but meaning the permitting process in general, they're going to come down my street next week, say.
Right.
Yeah.
Do they have to pull a permit to prune this?
No, they do not, Councilor, they, the, the franchise agreement allows them to prune, to prune the trees at their discretion.
Thank you.
That's pretty much nationwide, most of the power companies have the rights to prune those trees.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood that one.
Officer Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for your comments about the P G E tree pruning, I, I'm looking forward to the progress you're going to make there, that's exciting news for me because I think that's one of the biggest travesties that we have is we set these trees up for failure and uh, by planting them inappropriately and then we whack them in crazy places and it's, it's horrible. So I'm glad to see that happening, uh, but my question is, you mentioned the new tree list, I have not seen, I don't think, the new tree list and I'm curious, have you, what are your thoughts on uh, fruit trees or other, you know, food bearing trees that I know that we've always had a policy sort of against that and I'm just wondering if you have any other thoughts on that or different thoughts than we've had traditionally here?
Well, I've been a part of some other um, municipalities that, that worked with fruit tree programs, with fruit tree programs comes more staff, uh, comes a nonprofit organization that could help uh, move that forward, so we could definitely look into that and sort of advertise it and we have, may have some monies to, to plant trees in the future as far as small orchards and maybe next to some of the uh, community gardens and some of the community schools, uh, public schools, uh, parks, but uh, you know, street tree wise, that's a, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of extra pruning and it's um, a lot of upkeep, which would require a lot more staff than what we currently have, so, and you know.
Yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting.
It's a great idea because you get fruit and you're, you could, you know, nothing, Pro, Portland has a program, you could look into the Portland uh, fruit tree program, it's, it's run by a, a nonprofit group, so. You know, I think that's what it would come with, with a nonprofit group and maybe with some more staff.
Thank you, I was just thinking more in terms of our park areas and our open areas where we're planting trees, not necessarily on the street, so, but thank you.
Yeah, and even in a park, you're, you're going to, you know, you're going to plant those trees and you're going to have to have someone prune them properly and then have someone harvest them, so that's, you know, with that, I think just comes some, some groups that would be interested and I think that we could meet them halfway in, in some way there.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that if I could, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, all right, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Davis, so uh, just to follow up on that, uh, we had talked about fruit trees, you and I early this year, I'd had a constituent approach me with that proposal and as you already indicated, it's, it's not just the planning, it's the maintenance and the cost of all that as well. Um, you know, another thought that, that we had discussed was what about as part of goal two, which is education with the public? You know, we have a lot of food deserts in certain parts of the city, those food deserts tend to correspond with the heat islands in the city as well. And I'm wondering if there is education we can do to incentivize uh, particularly some of our low income neighborhoods to support planting fruit trees in their backyards, so they can provide a healthy and nutritious form of food growing in their own yard and they can be responsible for their own maintenance, obviously you can still provide the education and coordination, just saying, okay, this is how you plant it, this is how you take care of it, this is how you prune it. I'm wondering, do, do you, is, is that something you think that could be feasible for Salem?
You know, I think Patricia talked about a little bit, we're going to need to plant on, on private property to get this, reach these canopy goals that we need. And it, it's definitely possible and I have a horticulture background in, in planting fruit trees, so it's something I would love to do in Salem and I, you know, I think with time and with some of the right programs, we can definitely make those things happen, I think we can make it happen in parks, I think we can make it happen in schools and I definitely think there could be tree giveaway programs where you could, you know, potentially give away fruit trees to, to residents, that's something where, you know, we have a lot of funding now, we're getting into the, into the uh, to the tree program uh, for, for the trees that are being cut down here, so there, there'll be money out there for us to spend and, and we're going to, it's going to take planting on, on private property and involving residents in that, so yes, I think there's definitely a lot to be done in that realm.
Well, I think that may be something we may want to look into down the road, I don't know if there'd be grant opportunities as well, but food insecurity is a huge issue. As always in our city, we know that from the good work that Marion Pope Food Share and Salem Harvest, that they work to provide fresh food to low income families and people in need, um, so I, I would be interested maybe talking more with you offline about what we can do perhaps for, I don't know, maybe a pilot project and just starting small, right, we don't have to take it citywide, but maybe working with some low income neighborhoods that may be interested in, you know, doing more to grow their own food and help close the food insecurity gap that's been brought on by the financial toll of this pandemic on top of everything else.
No, I agree, I agree, there's a lot of opportunity out there for us to do some small pilot programs and a lot of other cities who have taken us on and we have a lot of information out there that we could, could learn from.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to um, circle back to the issue of the street trees that are uprooting the sidewalks in some cases actually uprooting foundations, I do appreciate the phone number, I've got that down. Um, but I'm curious, the staff's ability to address those issues, is it in a, in a timely fashion? I mean, if you get a call tomorrow morning that there's a tree uprooting my sidewalk, when can I expect the city to come out and make a decision on what to do?
I can talk a little bit about it, maybe, I don't know if Peter wants to say something too, but it's, it's a long process, there's a lot of trees um, across Salem, you know, thousands upon thousands of trees that are um, impacting sidewalks, whether it be a few inches or, or, or more than that and damaging sidewalks and it's something that was trees that were planted in the eighties or trees that were planted in the seventies and, and old sidewalks, so. It's definitely not something that's going to happen right away, uh, it's, people are getting put on a waiting list, it's, it's being kept in the order it was received sort of uh, situation unless we're doing uh, like the one you see here, the picture, uh, we're redoing some of the, the handicap ramps to get updated on our handicap ramp across the city, so uh, for the, for that reason, I, you know, it's definitely a long process, I can tell you that, so.
Well, if I could ask, are, are you talking days, weeks, months, years?
Well, I think it depends on how bad the, the sidewalk is and it could be up to uh, definitely months and, and potentially close to a year or more.
Okay, how do you prior, sorry? Um, how do you prioritize if, let's just say the sidewalk is severely damaged and being uplifted? Um, do you prioritize, prioritize it based on if somebody has an injury when they're walking or trying to bike over it and they don't see it?
Now, let me, let me jump in if I may, Counselor, uh, sidewalk repair is prioritized uh, by location and by ADA requirements. So yeah, it's, you know, sidewalks that are on designated ADA routes, you know, routes to schools, route to commercial centers uh, around parks, those take uh, priority, uh, you know, there's only so much money, there's only so much, there's only so much staff and there's a lot of sidewalk problems and a lot of sidewalk problems related to trees, so. So the tree crew can go out and assess the, the uh, the trees and the sidewalk crews can go out and do some quick patching. In, in many instances, what you see is just uh, the uh, the sidewalk that's uh, up, uprooted is just painted white to make pedestrians aware, uh, but uh, after that we go by the, by the ADA priority and that's the way, that's the way that works. And it can't, unfortunately, as, as, as Mr. Davis says, it, it sometimes it can take years, uh, just be, if it's, if it's in a neighborhood that doesn't have an ADA issue, there's a lot of other issues ahead of it, so it, it might wait a while.
Should we move on then to uh, the ordinances, okay, Mr. Chandler, is that you, who's, who's going to take us through that?
It is, I am uh, getting back up to uh, sharing my screen, you got, do you have it there? Yes.
Yeah, it's there.
All right, thank you, yeah, I apologize for a little slideshow uh, flashing back and forth, I didn't know we, that, that uh, IT had stopped my screen share, um, so the conversation could continue and I kept trying to bring it back up again. So we're now at the uh, really the, the second half of the, of the work session, which is, let's talk about Salem Revised Code, Chapter eighty-six. Um, and uh, ideally toward the end of this work session, we'll have some, we staff will have some guidance uh, specifically about the staff, uh, council's view on what is an appropriate uh, amount that the violator should pay. I'll start with, with a little background, uh, we revised Salem Revised Code, Chapter eighty-six about five years ago. I'll start with a little background. We revised Salem Revised Code, Chapter 86 about five years ago. It was revised, really a number of issues. In large measure, it was to, you know, the bookends here. Council wanted to be removed from making those direct project by project decisions. This is a private development projects on trees. And in the end, we set that responsibility for the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. When there was appeal, the director's decision for a tree to be removed for private development, a street tree, a tree on city owned property to be removed on by private development. We also needed to add more criteria, clarify public notice, establishing a lot of processes. But really it was moving council away from council chambers, making decisions and passing the responsibility over to SBR. We also had to create administrative rules to basically enact the code. It basically is chock full of criteria and standards and requirements and assessment and all of that. It's already been mentioned, that's where you can find the list of not only recommended street trees, but prohibited street trees. So we're five years into this now and it's been a lessons learned factory. Among the issues we need to do is clarify the role of SBR. If the director refers a city project for feedback from SBR, some refinement on the process for issuing notices of violation and tracking that. We, the code says the reference for the methodology, but it doesn't say there's some details that we can spell out more in the administrative rule. One of the things that we've learned is it's actually more efficient for us to do the restoration as opposed to the violator. Violator will still pay, but our recommendation when we come back to council is that we do the restoration and give an estimate to the violator on what that costs. And tonight is to align the payment, you know, what the code says with what council intends. We've had some fairly large collective penalties came out and we're not entirely sure that's what council intends. So let me talk about how that works out currently. If somebody violates our tree code, there's a civil penalty, which is up to $2,000 per tree. The purpose of that civil penalty is to basically identify the level of responsibility, fault, culpability. There's a point system established as a separate administrative rule. That point system goes whether it's a minor, moderate, or major violation. And based on the points and the nature of the violation, there's a civil penalty. It can be as much as $2,000 based on the set of enforcement actions to date. It tends, tends to be between 250 and $500 per tree. Second part is really restitution, the appraised tree value. That can be thousands of dollars per tree and it really varies. You saw on one of my slides, the factors that go into considering that. Our experience and the enforcement actions to date, it ranges over an order magnitude to over 13,700, sorry, $1,370 to almost $17,000. And so the violator will pay the civil penalty, pay the appraised tree value. And as the code is written now, the violator will also pay for the cost of restoration, which per code cannot be less than the appraised value. Which in practice says we basically double the appraised value because the cost of the trees tend to be less than, tend to be more rather than the actual cost of restoration. So let me show you how that works with a hypothetical example. There's a $500 civil penalty. That is added on to the cost of appraised, the appraisal cost of that tree, that's the restitution value. You can double that for adding the restoration fee. And so in this example, the violator will pay $12,100 for a tree. So just to bring up, we, based on the set of cases between May 2016 and more recently, 2020, we've had nine cases so far. Five of those have been resolved in one manner or another. We have collected $13,450. That includes a civil penalty, the appraised value, also restitution and the restoration costs. That's a large amount of money pending still, but over half of that is a settlement agreement that's been signed. We're waiting for the check to clear. There's another amount in there that's still in the appeal period. So we're not counting that. I mean, a couple of cases still under review. So what I'd like to suggest for Mr. Mayor and council for your discussion is what do you want? What do you think the violator should pay? I've divided it into three segments for that. The first one is for the civil penalty. Currently, the maximum civil penalty, which is also spelled out in Salem Revised Code, Chapter 20J, is $2,000 or less. And you saw that when you go through that matrix, it tends to be between 250 and $500 per tree for violation. Among the options for council just to consider is we can take that civil penalty and double it if it's a class two tree and triple it if it's a class one tree. So background for that is that in the administrative rule for Salem Code 86, we classify, we have three different classes of tree. A class one tree is a, an oak or a Douglas fir, a large tree, significant tree. A class two tree is not among those significant trees, but still important. And a class three tree is smaller and doesn't qualify. I can give you more details if you would like. So civil penalty, what is council interested in? Is that enough? You want more? The appraised value or also it keeps calling is restitution, the second of three ports, parts for a violator. The appraised methodology, the methodology we like, council, if you would like, you can say, we don't want you to exceed a certain set value. We don't have a recommendation for that. I don't know how you'd come up with that. But some people might think that $1,000 is right or $15,000, no more than that. So there's an option there. And lastly, for restoration, which a moment is equal to or greater than the appraised value, no matter the actual restoration costs. We can keep it that way. Or I've been assured that we can actually give the violator our estimated actual cost and we can add that on to the violation. So before council starts discussion, we've talked about this and of the three, we have recommendations for the bottom two. We like the appraisal methodology. It takes into account the tree species, the diameter, the quality of the tree. It's a good assessment value and it's written in code. It works. Our recommendation is council approve when we come back with the code that, right, you know, restoration, we can give you an estimate and you should pay us and we'll do it. That way we don't have the issue of the restoration cost can be small, but it has to be, the appraised value is high and that has to be the restoration cost. So those are the three aspects of what should a violator pay? We would like to come back to council with a proposed code that includes, that meets council's idea of what it should be. So that.
Do you have any thoughts, Robert, on sort of the degree of violation, sort of the person who willfully goes out and either kind of vandalizes a tree by inappropriate cutting on it? Or the person who has a tree come down and cut it off to get it out of the way? I mean, but it's still cutting down a, a tree. I mean, it's, how do you, how do you deal with that kind of?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because I will see if this works. I think it's a good time to talk about how do we actually assess that civil penalty? What is that matrix talking about? So far, so good. So this is out of administrative rule that is aimed at all codes that public works enforces. And there are five criterion that we look at was, you know, was it within the person's control? Was it negligence or a permit? To what degree was it willful or knowing? Was the violator responsive once the violation is pointed out? And is this a repeat violation? And we have spelled out in qualitative terms for whoever assesses this, how to do that. And so, for example, this is just excerpt out of it, will willful or knowing point zero through three? And we ask these questions and assign the points appropriately. Whoops. So looking at that, you determine the number of points under each of those five criterion. We have the point value. This is how we define minor, moderate, and major regarding this case for a violation of any code we enforce has to do with risk to public health, safety or damage to environment or our infrastructure, minor, moderate, or major. You take the points, you take those different natures of violation and you line them up. And this is how that matrix works. This is how we ended up with between 250 and $500 for those tree violations, the total number of points. And that's how it works. So in determining the civil violation, if council would like to go with something along these lines, in place of minor, moderate, or major, we can insert the classification of the tree. This shows you, for example, the classification, you know, class three at the bottom, six inches as diameter, the rest height or less. Doesn't fall into one of the above categories. A class two is healthy, structural, stable, but it is not a heritage tree, an Oregon white oak or a tree with exceptional ecological aesthetic or historic qualities. So rather than the top value being 2,000 for a, an egregious act in a class one tree, you can get as far as $6,000. That's one of the options.
What about a tree that is just in bad shape and falls down? It needs to be cut off and removed.
They really need to call us.
Well, they have.
And, and, and people, and people often do. So, so if a tree falls down or, or several limbs are fallen or a windstorm, the 503-588-6311.
If it's laying on their building and there isn't someone to come out, it's interrupting their business, what do they do? I mean, what if they just say, you know, I can just get it out of the way and suddenly they find themselves in cross purposes with you all?
We're not going to find them for that.
Okay. I'll tell them not to pay that fine. Is that what you're telling?
Yeah, unless they caused the tree to fall on their business, we're not going to find them for that.
Okay.
But they don't know it's a city tree. It, it gets back to that original goal with education. A lot of people have no clue.
Whose tree it is?
City tree and, 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 and discussions previously with the mayor, the, you know, the elderly person who has their son in law come over and cuts down a tree in the front yard, it's a pain in their rump. It's not knowing violation, but you know, it could pop up to 6,000 bucks depending on the type of tree that they whack out.
So a couple of comments, one of them, you know, the tree that falls down or is lying dead on someone's property, that's a street tree. You know, we establish criteria where we would issue a permit to remove a tree, dead, diseased, or dying are the top three. A tree that is down or falling against someone's property is dead and or diseased or is dying. So that's not really an issue of violating a permit. We would issue a permit or we come out and do it. 503-588-6333.
Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of thoughts on this. Mr. Chandler, if you could go back one slide.
That one?
Uh, maybe one more.
That one. Back that way.
So right here, right there. Nope, forward one.
Sorry, loose mouse. There you go.
It seems like the, the ma, your matrix doesn't really reflect our common sense or our thoughts because it seems like we really, number three and number five are really the things that, and maybe number four to a point. But those are really the things that we're trying to get at here was, did they willfully and knowingly do this? If they did, they need more than three points. Is it a repeat violation? They need 30 points. You know what I mean? We need to be able to, to really go at that behavior that we're trying to address here, which is people that are just knowingly flouting our rules. That's what we really are, one of the things we're really trying to get at as we educate everyone about this. So I, I really feel like this matrix doesn't quite get us there. It's to, it puts everything on an even playing field in terms of things that are beyond our control and willingness and knowing, knowingly doing something. That doesn't make any sense to me. So that's, that's my first comment. And if you could back up to the beginning of your, to the, a couple more slides.
Tell me what slide you're looking for.
The one where you started the conversation, I think it was.
That one?
Yeah. So right here. So, and I've mentioned this before. It, it does feel to me like we double dip with our appraised value and our restoration. Because there's really, the whole idea behind appraised value is to get to the, to, to restore the street and the tree, the neighborhood, whatever, back to where it, where it was before the damage was done. And so it seems like we kind of double dipped there. We really need, and, and I think that part of the consternation that's happening is that, like the mayor was kind of alluding to there, we, we, it's sort of a one size fits all feel to it in terms of penalty. And I think we really need to, to beef up our civil penalty in terms of use the flexibility within that. Like I was saying a little bit ago on our matrix and have, you can have some low civil penalties for those low level violations. And you can have a really high civil penalty when it's called for. And that's where you can get your variability depending on, on the situation. But the bottom line is we need to restore the tree. We need to restore the city's street, tree canopy to where it was. And that's where this restoration down at the bottom is going to get us there because we're going to ostensibly pay, you know, or they're going to pay to, to do that. Now granted, you, you don't, it's not always one for one because we know the difference between mature trees and immature trees, but it's going to get us a lot closer. We, we have the variability with the civil penalty and then we, we actually get the restoration cost. And maybe that means 10 years of maintenance or something to actually restore to the value. I don't know what, how you would do that. But I, I have felt like when we do the appraised value and the restoration value, those are kind of the same thing.
Yeah. I, I, I really agree with what you're saying, Counselor Hoy, in that I, I view this as a kind of really severe public vandalism. If it's a willful destruction of a tree. It, to me, it's a lot like very serious vandalism. And I don't know how that's handled, but that willfulness, I, I think that intent, what that person's up to really should play a key role. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before, Robert, you put the red box around it. Those were what I were going to suggest, the appraised value methodology and the actual estimated cost because you said the city's going to do it. So I think that's a good way to look at it. And I also agree with Counselor Hoy and the mayor that three, four, five, if they're knowing and willing, the penalties ought to be higher. I, I, I guess I wouldn't go to 30 times, but I'd go to, I'd go to five times or eight times or some, something that shows we're serious. And this goes back again to, I think it was goal number one, education. We've got to put that out. But if, if you, if you come into the effect of, of three, four, and five of, of what you talked about in that little chart there, they ought to be higher because they're doing it willfully.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and similar comments. And we've all discussed this kind of as council before as well. I, I would like to say, based on a couple of the emails that have come in today, they're saying, oh, those evil developers. Well, you know, we're a nonpartisan council. Back when we adopted the tree canopy, it was essentially a conservative council. And so to, to that extent, I think everyone agrees that we want to maintain our canopy. And the positive benefits both for residential, commercial, industrial properties to have mature trees. Knowing that as you try to develop a new industrial property and commercial property, which we've had discussions on, it's harder to, to maintain some of those trees. But as, as we get into this, it, and again, it's, it's really concerning based on the, the appraised value methodology. I know when I was in.
Last year.
First got involved with the city, my neighbors, when they were going to condemn our street to widen 12th Street, had a couple of really nice Japanese maples. And the appraised value of those trees was extensive. And, and so the city elected not to take them down. But again, you get back to just a common property owner who has no clue as to value of a tree that may be in city right of way, that may be considered a city tree. I don't know how we, we balance this across. I agree, knowing and willful violations and OSHI does the same thing, they, they whack you hard. They, they whack you hard. It could be up to seven, 10 times base penalties easily. And then if it's a repeat knowing violation, it, it dumps significantly from there. I, I don't want to seriously penalize someone who has no knowledge. And you know, our rule of law, I'm, I'm for that. Ignorance is no excuse, but we keep jamming more and more rules down. We're going to change them now again. How much of the population will actually know what our rules are after we even change them? Based on how many have no clue of what our rules are now. So I, I want to be, and again, it won't be my decision based on when this comes back to council. But I, I want to make sure that the incoming counselor for Ward three is aware of that as well, that we've had several issues in, in our neighborhood and in our ward. But we've had, you know, some development people out there purposely just whacked out a bunch of trees. And I don't think anyone agrees with that. But when, when it's unknowing, do you still go straight to the, the appraised value? And then actual cost, knowing that that is a big dollar amount. And then do we put a lien on the property like we do with some of the other? You know, when we were doing laterals in that, that they pay when they sell their house, but that's a significant financial depending on the value of that tree. So we just need to be really careful on how we set this up. Because otherwise you're going to be doing significant damage, especially to people who are of limited income and, and don't really know what the city is doing and they're going to have a great big bill to pay.
As you pointed out on those Japanese maples, if you'd gone over and cut those down, you'd have been liable for them. This is the publicly owned, this is a real asset to the city. These are extraordinarily valuable assets in some cases. And it's, it's making sure, I think, along with what you're saying, people understand. But people also understand they can't go in and, and knock down a building that's in their way that we own. Or go out and dig a hole in the street right of way, or spray paint the Capitol building. Or, you know, the whole list of those kinds of destructive behaviors. This is a destructive behavior that really does influence a, a very valuable asset to the city. Some of those trees are extraordinarily valuable. It's, it's a, I hear you in terms of finding the balance.
Yeah. And then we tell people, hey, the city owns a sidewalk, but you have to take care of it. So that what, how does that mess with their head when you say, hey, this is a city tree? Do I have to take care of it or is the city taking care of it? It gets confusing, especially for people who aren't tracking, you know, the city isn't what we're doing.
Tom, did you have something?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. So what do you need from us? You need something from us?
Sorry. Uh, what I'm hearing from council is that we're fine with the, you know, stick with our methodology for appraised value. Make restoration cost equal our actual estimated cost. And that does include a longer term maintenance period as well. I'm also hearing that, you know, the matrix approach for the civil penalty is okay in concept. But we, I, we don't want to use what we're currently using for the other codes, which is like, you know, dumping and spilling and everything else, make a specific matrix for trees that has some forgiveness for unknowing, unwilling, innocent actions and a much greater penalty for somebody who is, mind my manners, was being obnoxious and has done it before.
Robert, one of the things I'm, and, and I hope counselors will correct me, but I think I'm hearing in part is this really is subject to the good judgment of, of you all who assess these fines, much like it has been. And I'm wondering if we're leaving you too much, too much latitude that leaves you with the responsibility you, you don't mind having or you don't want, or should we be clearer? What, what are you looking for here?
Well, let, let me jump in if I may. The, uh, just to clarify a couple of things. So, so the matrix, however it's laid out, the matrix that, that Robert showed is, is a civil penalty matrix that we use for all civil penalties in public work. So if there's erosion control issues, if there's, you know, any kind of other things. A few years ago, we hired a, an enforcement officer in public works. So he's actually assigned to us, not to compliance services. And the gentleman that we have is actually a former police officer, so he knows how to do investigations. And he takes these things very seriously and goes out and actually investigates what actually happened, you know, in case of this, of these tree issues. What happened? Were people aware? So he does a full blown investigation and then assesses what he finds against this matrix to assess the civil penalty. So, so I think from that regard, you know, he's doing it as, as a compliance officer would, would. And I think he's done an excellent job. It is not.
Peter, just for a second, then given Brad's sort of discussion of the public that just doesn't know, they're not intending to do wrong. They're, they've got a problem with a tree that's buckling their sidewalk. They, they finally just figure, I'll just go out and cut that tree down. What? They don't know whose tree it is, all that. How, how does that get handled?
So, so Mr. Armstrong would, would get that information and make a determination on how, on how to assess the penalty. Now everyone has their, has a right to their day in court. So those penalties are appealable to the hearings officer that will hear the case. So, so if they feel that, that, that our compliance officer overcharged them, didn't get it quite right or whatever, then there's a, there's an independent appeal process. But, but I just want to be clear that it's not Robert Chandler or Peter Fernandez or Patricia Farrell deciding on what the fine is. This is actually done by a professional investigator who is, who is assessing the situation and then applying that matrix, which is embedded in our, in our administrative rules.
Somehow most of the email I get suggests you're responsible for all this.
No, they, they use, no, the staff uses the term, the director deterrent, but that's only because that's what's in the code.
Wait, I changed that code real quick. There's a bunch of people who write emails, same people all the time, but they sure have you pegged.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I may, I'm sorry.
Yeah. If I can just follow up on that one real quick. What is the timing on staff processing the information from the work session tonight? And coming back to council, knowing that, you know, councillor nominee Gonzalez is in play with us tonight. But did, did we let the, the other councillor nominees know what we're doing tonight? What the timing kind of is so that who's going to make this decision and when is kind of a draft going to come before council for, for looking?
The council that's sitting at the time, the council that is sitting at the time it arrives will be the one that will make the decision.
Yeah. I'm just curious whether or not.
We're not making a decision tonight. We're looking, we're trying to share ideas and try to.
And, and I'm just asking when this may come back to council from the work session tonight? Is it a month out? Is it two months out?
I would say early next year.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah. I just wanted to know whether or not I'm going to be voting on it or my, my, my new councillor for my ward is going to be, to, to make sure that I can have discussions with him and that other councillor nominees are aware that this one's going to potentially be in their vote.
Could be, could be one of you will be voting on it. You're right. Unless they can, if they can get it to us sooner, they can get it to us sooner.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you. So one of the concerns we haven't really addressed in detail yet. And since I don't really see a detailed agenda, I don't know if this is the point in time where we discuss it or not. But one of the things that we heard from a neighborhood association that provided input tonight was to recommend the addition of a sufficient number of tree inspectors. And the whole point is to ensure that tree removal is consistent with approved plans and permits. And the reason why this neighborhood association brought it up is that this is the Swan Neighborhood Association, the Southwest Association of Neighbors. And this is the neighborhood that was impacted by having the tree permit approval process was completely out of whack. And, you know, they, they believe that if we had just had a qualified inspector on site, then perhaps this could have prevented from trees being illegally removed in the first place. So they're really stressing the opportunity to have a real tree inspector present to help provide that layer of oversight. Because, you know, once the trees are gone, they're gone. And we can talk about fines to assess damage, to deter misconduct. I get all of that. I support all of that. And I absolutely agree with having a stiffer penalty for both repeat offenders and knowing offenders, which are not necessarily the same thing. But my question for city staff would be, do we have tree inspectors? And if so, do we have enough to prevent these sorts of things from happening again?
Well, Counselor, that's, that's hard to say. We can, you know, we can always use more staff. For example, our, our, our compliance officer that is supposed to, to just handle public works issues, also we, we lend him out to compliance services and community development to handle all tree issues because he's just expert in that. And, and Brady Rogers team doesn't have enough people for that. And I know with building and safety, they could probably use more inspectors. And, you know, we in public works should probably use more. So it's really just a, a resource issue, a financial issue of where, where to place the, the, the limited resources. So, so yeah, we probably could use more people. I can't tell you today, you know, how many we could use. So that's, that's one thing. I don't know that extra inspectors would have fixed the Ren Heights issue where the, the individual there, I presume made a mistake. The trees were designated for removal in the plans. He missed the step that, that he had to get that permit first. So, so he just went out and did it. You know, that's, that's a situation where he really just lacked knowledge, missed the step, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to presume what his intentions were. But, but that wasn't an inspection issue. That was a, that was a lack of, of obtaining the permit before he removed the trees. But they were in the plans and showed that the trees were, were designated for removal anyway. So, so that really wasn't, in that particular case, that was an inspection issue. But we do have other issues, particularly on private development issues where, you know, are they doing, are developers doing the, are they following the tree preservation plan properly? Patricia earlier talked about, is there enough room so that the tree roots aren't impacted? So, so for those kinds of things, we could probably use more inspection services. And I'm certain that we don't have enough people to do that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And the other, you know, the other comment that the neighborhood association made that I really want to highlight because we received a great deal of public comment. And, you know, we can't reiterate every single piece of input that we received. I commend everyone providing that public comment and I wish I could hear from you directly during this work session. But with all those caveat aside, the other thing that they raised is that there's this whole concept of whether there are reasonable alternatives. And the neighborhood association was deeply concerned that the no reasonable alternatives analysis really seemed to be weighted in favor of the developer. And the frustration that they encountered along this process had to do with finding out, well, what does that mean by no reasonable alternatives? And what options did city staff consider in making this ultimate conclusion of no reasonable alternatives? So what they, what they, part of their frustration, I think for our community is a lack of transparency and how this process works and how we reach this concept of whether there are alternatives to removing the trees or not. So I would just make sure that you, I, I don't know if you received that feedback yourself firsthand, but I think it's important for all of our city staff to hear that feedback.
Counselor, did, did that occur in the planning process that no reasonable alternative standard? Does that incur, occur as the plans are reviewed and approved? Where's that happen?
I believe that our assistant city attorney has some, has some information on that. So the, the Ren Heights situation was a circumstance that really pointed out a gap in the various codes that we're dealing with.
Okay.
The Ren Heights development went through an extensive planning process. They worked with city staff to set up a tree plan. Originally the, the developer wanted to take out 20 trees and through the course of negotiations with city staff, they were able to save somewhere between 15 and 17 trees. That plan that contemplated taking out the trees that were ultimately cut down went through the planning commission, was approved by the planning commission. It was appealed to the city council. City council had the opportunity to review that plan and city council did in fact approve that plan. The, the plan was then appealed to Luba. And ultimately the, the Luba appeal was, was settled. So there was lots of public policy, public process around the development, around how the street was going to be laid out. And that it was, it was apparent that these trees were coming out. In this circumstance, what, what we had was somebody who jumped the gun. They understood that the trees were authorized to come out. They understood that they were, were required to have a permit that was in the, in the requirements. And they just, they just made a mistake in not getting the permit prior to removing the tree. And so SBRB was in the position of, we had this decision that had been approved by city council, that had been approved by the planning commission. And so, you know, in trying to implement the rules that we had in place, we said, well, look, the, the elected officials have approved this plan. The reasonable alternatives that are available have to be within the constraints, constraints of, of the plan that was approved.
So is there, Tom, did you see anything that we could improve in our, our planning process? Is there something missing there or in our permitting process that? I think the counselor is asking, how do we get at these? She has someone who's coming in after the fact and, and saying, we should have had a chance. Well, they had multiple chances, but they, could they, could they appeal a permit or?
Well, they, they couldn't. So the problem with the code that we have is that the, the land use decision comes well before the, the permit to remove the trees. And so, you know, if we were going to improve transparency, we would make it more obvious during the planning phase that these trees are going to come out. And so that if people have comments about those trees, that it could be discussed as perhaps part of the planning process.
Yeah.
The, the problem with that, of course, is that it then puts back in the, in the city council's lap decisions about trees, which is something that we were trying to avoid back in 2015. And so, you know, there's, there's going to be some give and take there. Another way to do this would be to have a more robust consultation process, you know, with the urban forester. And so that he can comment on that and, you know, maybe it's a combination of things.
You know, the other comment I would make is that it's not just the neighborhood association that found a lack of transparency in the reasonable alternative analysis. Included in our materials is also a letter from the chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who says, you know, quote, "City staff would do well to more fully document their analysis if no reasonable alternative is determined when dealing with neighborhood issues." So the, the SBRB board has also expressed some frustration with how this process has played out. And they felt that their hands were tied in some respects.
Yeah. This may not be the best case for this discussion, but maybe the, the broader issue of getting a clear analysis of what reasonable alternative means or how it's being applied might be something that we could look at in 86. something that we could look at in 86 if it's needed. I, I don't recall in the definitions, I read them, but I don't remember if the reasonable standard is in there and if it's reasonable. But they, they clearly, yeah, I, I think I see what happened. I think there must be a way though, to make it so that at the various points, that there are actually opportunities for public comment involvement and perhaps influence on the outcome. We need to figure out if we've got it real clear for them, how to, how to participate. I think they're claiming they didn't, except I remember them coming in multiple times on these issues. So I don't know.
Before my time too.
Yeah, I understand. Jim?
Thank you. You know, I sympathize with the Seattle Parks and Recreation Board. They, they were in a spot where it was, as far as I'm concerned, unclear, unfair. My opinion is that this is a development code issue, not a tree issue.
Yeah.
If you are going through the, the development process and you get approval, which includes the elimination of trees, then why not in that process, give the permit to cut the trees down necessarily?
Put it right there, yeah.
Yeah. What we're doing right now is we're having folks go through the process, get the approval, and then go through another process for the tree permit. And if nothing else, if nothing else, it adds to the cost of housing.
If, from that, Peter or Robert, if you disagreed, could you have not issued the permit? Even though they had planning approval, the trees were to come out, could you have said, no, I don't think we ought to let you take these trees down? Do you have any authority to do that?
So, so at the point of, at the point of, had, had he pulled, had, had the developer come and asked for permit, we would have issued it to, to him. Because the trees met the criteria for removal and that had all been worked out months before in, in looking at the street construction plans and all these. So, so a lot of that analysis had already been.
Why don't we issue them the permit like Jim's describing, kind of on the spot as part of the package?
Well, that's, that's what we need to do. That's, we're working on that.
Okay.
One of the, one of the things that we've discovered that, that Robert touched upon in his presentation is, when Chapter 86 was redone, our focus was on, you know, these are, you know, this is a street tree that's blocking my business sign and I'd like it removed. This is a street tree that drops too many leaves and I want it removed. This is a neighbor to neighbor issue. Those are the, those were the kinds of issues that historically had been around and that's what we were focused on. Frankly, we never envisioned that it would, it would become an issue for development. You know, that, you know, for infill development and how, so, so, so we are learning and, and there is, I understand SBRAB's frustrations and frankly, I agree with them. That, you know, the school district did a good job. The school district waited, you know, on the, on the, on the grant school. And still, SBRAB got it at the end, after the council had already talked about it and had already been, so, so we recognize that and we have to, and we're working to fix that. So that, that, that is an issue that we, that we recognize.
So this will come to us in some way during the review of 86, okay?
Yes.
Counsel Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this kind of, I beg the question, is SBRAB the right place to hear this? Should this, or should this be a planning, should be a planning decision, should be the?
One of the reasons, we had our, what was it called? The Tree Advisory Committee? I can't remember what we called it.
Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
The what?
Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Yeah, we had that and we wanted to kind of streamline a little. And so looked at SBRAB as the place to go and change kind of the makeup of the Parks Board to reflect that new responsibility, trying to figure out how to have that kind of review. And you're asking a really good question. Why are we, why are we laying it on parks? We don't have that, we have to have, I think the feeling has been, we need somebody to review these tree issues and particularly the one that we're hearing a lot about and still do is white oaks. And it was trying to have, along with everything else, white oaks and heritage trees and some other things and having someone who can help arbitrate that issue. But I hear what you're saying. I mean, it's, it is kind of a planning. Yeah, Tom, do you remember all this?
Yes, I do.
Good, I thought you might.
I'm gonna sound a little bit like Counselor Nanki here because a prior council, we discussed this and there was, before your term as a mayor, Mr. Mayor, and there was, there was an issue about, could we just have a separate tree commission?
Right.
We had quite a long, long discussion where only these sort of things would have gone to the tree commission and that idea lost. The prior council said exactly what you said. Let's just stick this tree issues in SBRAB. So.
Because there's very few tree issues that come up and it was sort of efficient, it seemed like, I think at the time, I think I made the motion to do that.
Well, well, you know, the law of best intention and unintended consequences might have been here. So I'm wondering, in light of what Counselor Hoi said and what we just discussed, and in the light of the fact there are so few of these, perhaps there should be an appeal from SBRAB to the council and then that would, we're back in involved again, but we're not, it would not be onerous, you know, you know, five, 10 a year or one a month, I suppose, you know, it's two or three at most a year.
Are you at all concerned? And, and I, I can certainly understand where you might say, no, we're just politicizing a tree issue for, this actually requires, we actually have an arborist, we have multiple arborists, we actually have, what we didn't have at that time was a staff and, you know, that really have some special knowledge. And you and I don't have that special knowledge. We do get the emails, but that doesn't give us any kind of knowledge. That just gives us emails.
Mr. Mayor, I do have those concerns and that's why we're kind of discussing it.
No, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
You think we have special knowledge as a council to handle this?
No, I don't. But I, but we're just discussing.
Yeah, okay.
Where we go from here.
Okay, Counsel Hoi?
Thank you. To clarify, I did not suggest bringing it to council. I suggested taking it to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trust me, you'll be happy you, you maintain that position.
But, but also that does have a built-in sort of appeal process that could ultimately, could ultimately end up with us, not necessarily, which I think is fine in those rare cases that need to.
Well, if they go through the planning process, you know, if people with interest go through the planning process, and we've seen them do it.
Right.
And, and they did, even in the case that Counselor Nordike is citing, they did go through the planning process, they just didn't win the argument, I guess.
Right. I think we're asking SBRAB to, to get involved in an area where they, I mean, individually, they might have expertise, but as a, we don't invest anything in them as a city in terms of their knowledge base in this area other than about trees. But it's really a much bigger picture than just the tree.
Yeah.
To me, it seems like that's kind of the role of the Planning Commission. They do have that sort of broader perspective and there is sort of a built-in process afterwards. So, I don't know, I did, I wasn't involved in the conversation that sent it to SBRAB, so I don't know all of the reasons behind it. But it just seems to me the Planning Commission makes more sense.
Well, this is certainly an area, I hope, Ms. Chandler, Mr. Fernandez, we can explore as we go into 86. Counselor Nordike?
Yes, I'd like to point out the fact that included in our materials is a recommendation from one of our planning commissioners to assign the Planning Commission the authority to act on tree removal permits. And that can be done when the application is related to a land use case that's already within Planning Commission's jurisdiction. So we have at least one planning commissioner saying, by all means, put this on our plate. We think it's consistent and it's within our mandate, it's within our scope. And they can have city staff, the arborists and the other experts that you mentioned weigh in at that time. And I also believe strongly that we need an urban forest commission because we can have folks to provide a layer of oversight, they can help assist staff in developing goals, monitoring the program, doing the public education. And again, also provide support on whether and how to remove trees and to grant these tree removal permits. So I think long-term, that's something we need to look at carefully. And I have an idea in mind for what that urban forest commission will look like, but I wasn't going to bring a motion during a work session.
Yeah, you can't. So, but it's an interesting idea. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, absolutely. Just planting the seed right now. So there you go.
Yeah. Bring in that one planning commissioner that's interested in taking this one on. I want to see him. What else have we got? Any other areas here in 86 you'd like to?
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
See me? I want to pivot topics a little bit. I know there's a forestry strategic plan out there. I don't think it was included with our materials and I wish it was actually, but I found it on the city website. And it breaks down these, these goals into sub-goals and objectives. I think it would be very helpful, this looks like it was revised in 2014. I think it would be really helpful if we could get a revision of this matrix. I think it's Appendix B perhaps? That just goes through and says where we are at with those goals and objectives. Because there's, there's criteria here and how much money and the partners and the status. And it would be great to see an update of that. That would take a whole lot of work, perhaps.
Patricia, are you familiar with this?
Yes, in fact, that's, that's something we have been keeping track of. So I do have an updated matrix where I've been keeping track of things that we've completed, things that are ongoing. So I can definitely send that to council.
Great. I think that'd be very helpful.
Really helpful. I think there's some really good stuff on here that we haven't gotten into, don't necessarily need to tonight, but it, it does touch on some of the things we've been talking about. So it might give us a better picture of kind of where we're at too. Yeah, thank you.
And also if it needs to be amended or updated, we can think about that.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else? Is there anything else at all that caught your attention in this? You want to kind of talk with staff about? Yes, Counsel Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious about sort of the issue that brought us here tonight or one of them, you know, the pending cases that hadn't been addressed in the past.
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful to have an update where we're, where those are at. I mean, I know I saw some reference in the materials and maybe you can't talk about some of them, maybe you can, but I think that would be helpful. And, and what do we need to do to make sure that we don't get ourselves in that situation again where we're, staff is on one page and council's on another in terms of enforcing the code?
Mr. Fernandez, would you like to?
Yeah, we, well, we provided that summary. We were, you know, we got the direction from council. And, and, and I want to be clear, one of the things that, that, that it was, it was so summarized that, that we didn't get into a specific. All the civil penalties have been paid, you know, for that, for kind of the pending cases. It was really the restoration costs and the, the other assessments that, and we were waiting to settle the big case. And now that that's been settled, now we're, you know, we're working through the, the smaller cases that have not been, you know, some of them have been addressed, some of them are pending and now we're working through, through each of those.
Are there any issues in those that you need to have us talk about or you hear?
I don't think so. If, if we get hung up on something, then we'll come back to council and, and ask, and ask your advice. But I, I thought your advice was clear at, at the executive session and, and based on that, we're working, we're working through, through each of them. But we'll see if we get, if we hit a snag on any of them.
Is that enough, Counsel Hoi? Are you, it wasn't much, but I, I think we're getting about as much as they can tell us at this point in public.
Yeah, we can get to the, I mean, we can get to the, the, as, as they get worked out, we can send you the information.
Okay.
We're not trying to hide anything. We're just.
No, I understand.
We're still working through them.
No, I understand. I guess the second part of my question is, you know, was about how do we make sure we don't get back here? You know, when we're, council's on one page and staff's on another page in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, so, so some of the issues, you know, the, the, there, there was, there was a staff failure in, in the follow-up. Again, the, the civil penalties had been paid. It was the, we did not have a good process on, on how to do the restoration and that follow-up. I think we've addressed that issue. We've, we've cleaned that up. We have, you know, we've hired Mr. Davis, who is an excellent forester. And understanding where that failure was, we fixed that process. So this idea that now the staff is going to do the restoration will address that issue. So we're never in that process again. We may come, I mean, you've given us some feedback on how we're going to do the, the fines and we're going to come back to council as we clean up Chapter 86. You know, there's all, there, there may always be a situation where we might find ourselves where we need advice from council as to, you know, hey, are we, you know, this has been appealed, you know, do we need to pull back a little bit or whatever? But, but what we want to clear up is, hey, here's the matrix and here's the, here's what we're charging. So we have a starting point. And then as we get into a, a, an appeal situation, then we, we may always need and, and, and look forward to advice from council on where, where are the sideboards?
Thanks. Counsel Leung, did you have anything? Hi.
Hi. Yeah, I want to kind of follow up on at least one of the, several of the cases that have been ongoing because some of them, it's been a few years since the penalty was initially initiated on them. And I understand there was appeal that didn't, it didn't go through. So, and my understanding, they still haven't paid and they still haven't did the retribution, which is the new trees. So are we going to also be able to discuss or incorporate somehow or another, like a timeline for, for, for them to actually follow through?
Yeah. So, so, and, and Counsel Leung, that's, that's precisely the case. By moving the, the replanting to the staff, then we have full control. And then we'll just bill them for that. And that the biggest, the, the, the significant failure here was, we had sent the, the, the civil penalty and we had sent the letter saying, and now you have to contact the city staff to work on your plan. And where things fell apart is, in most of those cases, the property owner had, did not contact the staff and we did not follow up. So, so that's where, that's where the failure occurred. So, so we were good about the enforcement, but not good about the replacement. By moving that to the staff and then just billing them, then we control the timeline. So I think, I think we have fixed that one.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else then? Mr. Fernandez, did you have any closing remarks?
No, I, I appreciate the, the council's time on this. You know, clearly you, what we wanted to share with you is how much work we are doing and how many trees we are planting and how hard the staff is working. And there's always room for improvement and that's why we wanted to engage the council and get some feedback. I think we got some good information to, so that we can address the chapter, the Chapter 86 issues and address some of these issues that frankly have been ongoing, you know, since Cassia Quilinen was chair. You know, she was expressing some concerns about where does SBRAB fit in with historic preservation and with planning? So, so there's a lot of things that need to, that, that need to be fixed in terms of who has, who has priority in, in these things.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chandler and Ms. Farrell. We really appreciate taking the time. Counsel Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one follow-up question to an earlier comment I made to Ms. Farrell. And that's on the goals. And I'm just wondering, you know, the specifically updating our goals so they're more stratified, not just as the city, for the city as a whole. And I'm wondering what that process would look like or if you need council to do something or, or, or just what's the process from here to make something like that happen?
I'll have to give that one some more thought. So you're saying to actually break down the goals into specific neighborhoods or to kind of finer grain on, on it?
Breaking down the canopy goals into geographic areas, whether it's neighborhood associations, whether it's ward, something other than just the whole city. Because like we were talking about, there are some, there are some areas that they're probably maxed out. And then there are other areas that are like my area that's significant, has some work to do. And so I think it would be helpful in achieving our goals overall if they were actually broken out that way. Plus it would bring the equity back that I find missing in, in our tree canopy.
Counsel Nanki?
Yeah, and then again, just one last comment on the goals. And, and the kind of the root of the conversation tonight is, how do we deal with education and communication with people? I, I put a council motion back in in 2004 to improve our communication strategy. And, and that's very difficult, but we really need to look at how, as these rules change, that we, that we make sure that as many people as possible understand them so that we, we don't have to sit there and play inside of a matrix and have an investigator say, well, did they know that the rule was there or not? And, and that gets tough.
You know, Counselor, we, we send. You know, Counselor, we, we send out a lot of information, you know, for recreation programs, for flood programs, for, for things, and we just need to include this, you know, we need to think about how, how we just do more direct mailing and.
So read that and it just goes straight into the recycle bin.
Well, that's right, so.
Mayor, this is Jose. I have a comment.
Jose?
Yeah, you know, and actually Brad, thank you for that. I was thinking about a few things. One is, as far as education, Patricia, do we have any partnership with the schools? You know, when I was younger here in the eighties, they did a Keep Oregon Green program that changed my life, changed my family's life. And so definitely a partnership with their schools, but also with our landscapers' nurseries. I know landscapers, CCB, they have a continued education requirement, you know, is this, is there knowledge, this kind of knowledge out there? Because that's who I would call, landscapers visit nurseries. That's where I'd get the information from. And it'd be nice if they could also be included in that information.
Yeah.
And then also just, yeah, and also.
Just saying. Go ahead, Jose.
And just Mylan, I wanted to just congratulate, you know, thank him, because his office, we had a tree that I thought for sure was going to get removed and they came and checked it and they put that sidewalk right over it and it looks great.
Oh, good.
They kept just a beautiful tree around their office, so I want to give them a thumbs up.
Very good. Patricia, I also want to make sure that you capture the suggestions from Counselor Nordike on mature trees, that you'd mentioned that that'd be fairly easy to work in. I think getting that into those goals is really important as well, if, if you have a strategy for getting them in.
Yes, I, I foresee some changes, some updates to the, the strategic plan.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to mention as far as public information and Mylan has a, a door hanger now that he has developed, that if, if, if the city's working on trees in the neighborhood, they actually put it on the doors and so it gives ways to contact the city and it directs people to the website. And we're working on trying to upgrade our website information as well, so.
Well, I, I want to second to the comment from Jose Gonzalez in that I know I rely on a landscaper, I think Tom and I have the same one, and having them informed would be very helpful, I think, for both of us and for the people they serve. I assume all the people who interact with these various companies that are providing a great deal of, of decisions in the community on, on maintenance of trees, on private property as well. I think that would be great to keep that shared and, and that's who I would ask. I would ask the guy that owns the company that does work at our place would be probably one of the first people I'd go to. So I, I liked, I thought that really was very helpful. Okay? All right, if no one objects, then we're adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Very, very much.
Bye.